I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice as a whole.
President?
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 President.
President.
This is brought before the council consent agenda. Approval of regular session council meeting minutes June 25, 2018. No executive session held on June 25, 2018. Approval of regular session council meeting minutes May 29, 2018. Approval of special council meeting minutes June 20, 2018. Approval of special council meeting minutes June 26, 2018. Councilor Ryan and Edwards abstain, absent. Approval of special council meeting minutes May 31, 2018. Received in minutes from the following boards and commissions. The Cemetery Commission, Economic Development Commission, too. Correspondence received and filed, Samaritan's of Rhode Island. Thank you memo for support and 500 municipal grant. Approval of tax successor abatements. Town administrator June monthly department reports. Town administrator police and fire overtime reports for June. Any councilors wish to take anything off of the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Councilor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, CA 1 through CA 6.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Public forum, do I have something? I think I do. Jeanie?
Give it to me.
That's all right. Please bring it in for me. Thank you. Peter Monis, status of the traffic light at Bogomash and Fish Road. State your name and address.
Peter Monis, 83, Captain Circle, Tiverton. I'm questioning the status of the traffic light that's supposed to have been constructed some time ago. I think the state's been working on for about two years now on Fish and Bogomash. I don't see any progress there. I don't see a light, that's for sure. And I'd like to see, you know, report the status to the town council and the public. And hopefully it'll get done before the school year starts again.
I personally don't have an update. I don't know if the town administrator, but what I will do is I'll check with Representative Edwards.
I'll check with town.
No, I think it has to do with the state, Peter.
I know it's the state doing, but the town should be pushing these people or asking them.
Well, I will check on it. The town administrator or I will do it, maybe both of us. Okay, thank you. EDC business card holder for town hall, Barbara Pelletier.
Barbara Pelletier, 104 Barney Field Drive. The EDC, we have, we've been discussing on how to ramp up business, do something, at least some small matters or something. And we thought that posting, having a place where everyone could, in doing business in town, could, if they chose to have their business cards available, might be a good thing. And these 48-piece holders are readily available. And we thought if we could put some back there, one, start with one and then work up. So I can give you this picture and you can decide whether or not you want to approve it.
Okay, I'm going to refer that to the town administrator because I'm sure it's less than what he needs to approve for.
We can, we can afford it.
Oh, yeah.
So we pay for it, it's just we need your permission.
I don't even know if you need our permission.
I was told you get it.
Yeah, I think the town administrator could definitely give you permission for this. I don't think it has to do with that.
That's enough.
Like, I'm passing everything on to you on tonight. Did you notice? He was on vacation last week.
So if you let me know within a reasonable time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. It was a great idea. Thank the EDC. Public hearing, advertised public hearings. Public hearing on amendment to fee resolution, addition of fees for solar, major land development, planning board recommendation. Peter, are you going to take this or?
Sure. Essentially, this was a recommendation from the planning board regarding amending the fees for, for master plan developments for large solar arrays. The intent was to not have the larger fee that would be associated with like a big box store or something like that because it's a less impactful development. It compares well with other towns. The planner administrative officer looked at other towns' fees and he stated that this is in line.
There's no one here from the planning board, correct? No, but the planner is. Do you have anything further to say or?
Bill Compton, town planner. No ma'am, I think Peter captured it perfectly. We researched, we think the fees are in line with the amount of work being done. We will, as we go forward with these projects, look at, you know, cost actual and then can come back to you to hopefully maybe even lower the fees some more, but raise or lower as needed. So we'll just sort of keep track of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comment from the audience?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'll be excused.
No, it's a public hearing, so you can comment on this.
I'm sorry, I'll tell you open the next one.
No, I'm not opening the next one yet. This is on the fees.
Jumping the shark there, Peter.
Yeah. You're a little too anxious for me, Peter. Anyone else from the audience like to comment on the solar fees? I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fees as recommended by the planning board for major land developments for solar activity in the town.
Any discussion with the council? No. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Planning board, discussion in action on proposed amendment to Article 2, Article 5, and Article 6 of the zoning ordinance to add a definition for accessory structure and alter the dimensional regulations applicable thereto, continued from May 29. A, amended proposed ordinance. B, solicitors memorandum. Peter?
So this was back in front of you about a month ago. And I believe we were asked to redraft it to allow accessory structures in the front yard, so long as they're not in the front yard setback. We drafted it along those lines. We were also asked to do some research about what other towns were doing. It's about an even split. You know, there's a lot of towns that do allow accessory structures in the front yard, but not within the front yard setback. There are other towns that don't allow it within the front yard at all. And there's other towns that will kind of have a compromise rule where they'll allow certain structures, not, they won't allow certain structures in the front yard, but allow others. A common one would be, you know, they won't allow pools in the front yard, but any other accessory structure would be.
Any questions or discussion from the council at this point? I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the public? Now, Peter.
Peter Monis, 83, Captain Circle. Now, looking over the documentation that was presented to the town council tonight, you have the same ordinance that was presented to you last month, no changes basically. And you were given, and you were, we talked about this for several minutes at least, about certain things to be changed. I can name a couple, like the ridge line, we're supposed to drop that and use the building height. And then the number of structures that could be in the front lot area was talked about. Now, this memorandum is kind of ridiculous. It's, this question is going over for, we've been working on this for about, I have been working on it for almost two years now. We're going on two years. The main question before the planning board, which came from the zoning review board because of a problem of interpretation of the zoning ordinance, it's gone off track. The problem was accessory buildings and setbacks, not placing things in setbacks. And where to place accessory buildings. Over the time, it's been bang around to go for heights, the number of buildings, certain size of buildings on a property, when all you had to do is clear the problem, clear the details of where the accessory building is to be placed on a piece of property. And now the memorandum is comparing two options, adding yes and no in certain accessory buildings up in the front lots. It's ridiculous. Of the 18 towns which he listed, those people are, they're on the ball. They know what they're doing. They're making a good town for themselves. To add accessory buildings in the front lot is going to cause problems and ugliness in this town. We should work on our own town, not taking pieces from here and there, because that doesn't make sense.
But we did ask for that. We did ask to see what other towns do, but the town council asked for that, so that's not this solicitor.
Yes, but it's not the right way to go because it's like cherry picking here and there, and it's a disaster. What's going on in Little Compton and what's going in Providence? What's going in Cranston? Might be good for them, but it's not going to be good for Tiverton. We should be working on our own problems. Well, we haven't solved this yet, it's just gone worse.
Pete, a little poofy thing that goes on that microphone.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, if you know what mine, I know it falls off all the time, but I think that's what's making it all.
Plus, I got a loud voice, I think, too. I'm sorry. But I don't know what's going on. It's just a simple, should be a simple situation where we want a town building inspector, when he has a problem where somebody's trying to cite a shed, basically, on the property, where to put it? Keep it out of the setbacks. Definitely, all setbacks should not be encroached upon. Before, if you do that, let people put things in the setbacks, the real setbacks, the buffer zones, you're going to have neighbors on top of neighbors and privacy problems and other conflicts. So why make this into a big problem when you should just clear the process? And going through, comparing, I looked at one town because I didn't have much time to look through all of them, and some of the data I disagree with because he said there's no accessory buildings in the front. There is. And that town was East Greenwich, and I just looked at it, and I talked to another lawyer about it. He said they don't have accessory buildings in the front lots. So what are we doing here? Two years and it's going and turning into a mismatch, mismatch and no progress.
I disagree with you. I think that we have talked this to the point that we have instructed that all this should be done, and we are going somewhere. Last meeting, we spent over two hours on this. And I believe what we have in front of us is what we requested. I mean, of course, the council has to talk about it and tweak it as necessary, but I disagree with you.
What are you talking about then? The progress? He's asking the memorandum. Is that your, is that your point?
No, I have an ordinance here that we have to look at it and decide if we want to.
Same one that was there last month?
I think it's a little different.
Yeah, there is a change.
There is a change.
This ordinance allows accessory structures in the front yard, but not the front yard setback.
Right.
Which those, we were actually, if I recall, I have actually motioned for several changes with the ordinance, and we all decided to pull that off and have them actually write it and put it in front of a scan, so.
Right.
It looks to me like what we had originally motioned, what I had originally motioned.
I think we are trying to make progress, and I, we spent over two hours on this last time, and I think what we have in front of us is somewhat what we agreed to.
What's this? I'm looking on the webpage. Is the webpage current from last time? Because I didn't see much of a, I didn't see, I didn't notice that says front.
Well, I'm sure it's the backup when we advertised the meeting. I'm sure that that's all on.
But it's also dropping. I don't know why you want to drop a column on the zoning table, the heights of accessory buildings.
We talked about that. All right, well, thank you. But there's going to be further discussion, I'm sure. Anyone else from the audience have a comment or question? Anyone else have a comment in the question? I'd like to close the public hearing. Comments and questions from the councilor, please?
Madam President? Oh, go ahead, John.
Go ahead.
Age first.
Okay, so I was against this ordinance last time in May with the changes that are here. Now, we are allowing structures in the front yards, and I think we, other than what Peter's saying, we did a big change. So we're not denying anybody from anything. And with, all the setbacks are going to stay the same, and they can have their structures. That's what I wanted. That's what the attorney did. So that's where our changes, we did do our job. And I'm going to vote for this now because it's, it's not taking anybody's ability to have a structure in their front yard, except for a swimming pool, which is not a good place for one anyway.
It can go, because you don't listen to.
The public hearing is closed.
Oh, well, he's pointing to me, and that's.
Oh, I know.
I would clarify, we didn't put that in there to do a carve-out. If you wanted us to have a carve-out for a swimming pool.
Well, you mentioned.
Yeah, if you wanted to do that, you could. You could just make a petition.
Well, to me, it doesn't matter where they put it, but if you said no, then it's no.
It's up to you.
But we, there was a lot of work done on this, and it does help the residents of town. If it didn't, I wouldn't be voting for it.
John?
So as I mentioned before, the last meeting, we, I made a motion to approve the zoning amendment with a couple of changes at the time. We discussed and asked the solicitor to implement those changes as were discussed before we actually made a motion on it. The ordinance that's in front of us today looks exactly like those changes which I was originally going to motion. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Article 2, Article 5, and Article 6 of the zoning ordinance to add a definition for accessory structure.
I'll allow that motion with a second, but then there is going to be discussion.
I'll second until you're done.
The motion's been made with a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Hilton?
Yes. I, well, it's been slow getting here. I, too, think we've made some progress. You know, in looking at this, part of the reason that we asked the solicitor to help us with this is we were sort of trying to do something that would be more user-friendly and make it easier for people to be able to get an accessory structure without having a situation where somebody's got four accessory structures in their front yard, because one person's nice accessory structure is in another neighbor's, this looks like a mess. Which is why we asked the solicitor to look at some other communities for us. And frankly, you know, I'm a little more interested in the option of, you know, to allow them, but to carve out certain things that just don't belong in, in my opinion, in the front yard. I don't think you should have a swimming pool in your front yard. I think there are certain accessory structures that don't belong there, and I think the risk, you know, of devaluing neighboring properties if you've got too many of them and the wrong kind. So, you know, I'd be more interested in asking the solicitor to go with the middle option here, where we allow the accessory structures, but we do have some carve-outs for certain things that, in my opinion, just don't belong in the front yard.
And what would those things be? Well, there would be swimming pools, I would imagine.
I would say that swimming pools definitely probably don't belong in the front yard. I think that, you know, the HVAC system, you know, a dog kennel maybe doesn't belong in your front yard. You know, the solicitor's got a list of them, compost piles, you know, a composting pile maybe doesn't belong in the front yard. So.
So what?
Me personally, I'd be interested in having the solicitor, you know, take what we have here. He's mentioned some other communities that have a carve-out and give us a list of, you know, these are the things that we might not want to allow as accessory structures in the front yard.
Well, some of these I don't agree with. Any questions? I think a gazebo is fine in the front yard. I think a doghouse is fine in the front yard.
Wasn't there something about if your garage doors faced the road, you have, we eliminated, right?
We got all that out, yep.
I didn't see it in you, that's why I want to make sure.
This is what the last one looked like.
Yeah, I have that somewhere, too. Christine? Any comments or questions? I'm sorry, I'm just going down the line.
Oh, no.
Counselor Shabett?
Just the one change that we had asked for in Article 6, Section 1A, about the fifth line down, where it says the height of the ridge line of the primary structure, we had requested that be changed to building height and eliminate of the ridge line. That would be the only change that I would request.
So it would be, shall not exceed the building.
Building height of the primary structure.
Thank you. Is that okay with him?
I would like to voluntarily amend my motion.
Why don't you wait until we see if there's anything else?
Okay.
Joe, anything? Counselor Perry?
Nope. The only thing I was looking for was that.
That was Counselor Hilton's suggestion to put, exclude some things from the front yard. How do you all feel about that?
So I looked at the list. I mean, we're talking about accessory structures. I mean, to me, a compost pile isn't an accessory structure. I mean, it's a pile.
But we have to put that in here.
You know, I think if you wanted to make sure that you're not going to have compost piles in the front yard, you could. I was just doing it as examples of what other municipalities do. I don't think a compost pile is a structure, but they did put that in their ordinance, so.
How about an HVAC system?
I think that would be a structure, but it all depends on whether you want to prohibit that in the front yard or not. You could.
I mean, you could, you know, you think about like ground-mounted HVAC systems. Most of the time, they're being concealed behind something like shrubbery or, you know, something along those lines. I mean, you're not going to see it anyways.
Oh, hot tub. I happen to know there's a couple of houses with a hot tub in front.
In front?
In Tiverton. But with the fences, you probably don't even know they're there. Because they're part of almost the house, and there's a fence. I know at least two or three that have a, and you guys wouldn't even have known it was there unless.
Madam President?
You've been in it, and I have.
I like it the way it is. I don't want to start adding all them other little structures in there. So my second was for as-is here, for structures and all that other stuff, but they, maybe that's the only place you can put an AC unit, is in the front yard. Put a tree in front of it or something. We're talking structures, buildings. Now, we're going to get into air conditioners and kennels.
Swimming pool, would that be a necessity structure?
Technically, it would be a structure. So this would allow in the front yard, I mean, I guess the real circumstance where you'd be thinking about someone that would actually put something in the front yard, at least in my opinion, would be waterfront property that's far setback. Technically, the roadside would be the front yard, but the homeowner treats the roadside as the backyard because they treat the waterside as the front yard. So.
Yeah, that's true, too.
But is it the same thing with the hot tub? I know a lot of people that have it in the front because there's no real room in the back. We have septic or whatever.
Drive up Bogomash, there's, as you go up Bogomash, there's a above-ground pool, which is right on Bogomash.
Yes, you're right.
I mean, it's tech, it's technically on the side of their house, you know, but if you're driving up Bogomash, it's the front.
But they don't have a backyard, really?
They don't. I mean, I don't know. I think, you know, we're going to start getting a little too nitpicky. I think if there's rampant abuse in the system, then we, the planning board will come back to us with something, and so I would just like to make the amendments, and my motion to change ridge line to height of the building, as requested by Counselor Shabett.
Counselor Lee Wabog, do you second that?
I second that.
So motion's been made. Second. Any further discussion? Yes. The planner weigh-in? The planner? Do you want to weigh-in?
Oh, no, thank you.
Wise decision.
Well, I don't think he was a big part of this.
Madam President, I have a question. It's about his professional opinion about this planner, about his accessory structure.
And I think it's kind of, yeah.
So, Madam President, I have a question.
Yes.
So if we, if we do this, just as is, just as what, you know, John and Randy said, I mean, is it possible to ask for a variance?
So you still could? This would eliminate a lot of need to request a variance because you wouldn't need a variance to build in the front yard. You would only need a variance if you were going to build within the front yard setback. And when you come for a variance, one thing they're going to look at is if there's any other reasonable place to build. And if you're allowed to build in these other places, they'll probably tell you, don't build in the setback, just build in one of the places you can. There may be some lots that are too small to build anywhere, and they will be allowed to build in a setback, but this will eliminate the need to request.
And there's a limit on how big it can be, anyway. It's 864 square feet. So that could be another potential, if they want to build it a little bigger. Right. I guess I was thinking, you know, one of the things, you're thinking that every piece of land in Tiverton is the same, but just as you said, it's like a lot of times you're a lot away from the street. And that's, that's the only thing I was thinking, is so if you want to put a swimming pool, but you're so far away from the street that it, technically, it is the front yard? But that's where I was saying, could that be, you know, if they wanted to do that? Because I'd just assumed, not tack in a lot of stuff in here, but also give people an option. If they say that, can I have a variance? That would be okay.
Yeah, so that's, that circumstance where you have a large lot and it's setback from the street.
Yep.
They could most likely build in what would technically be the front yard by right. It would only be if they were getting to the setback, which was close to the street, is where they would need a variance.
Okay.
That eight, not that I know a lot about this, but that 864 square feet, that would eliminate some pools.
Yeah.
That's a small pool, isn't it? Am I right?
Yeah, I guess. That number.
That would be a very small pool for a thing. No? I don't know. I don't know anything about this.
Where is it? Home ground?
Mine.
Let's do, let's do the Gesindes.
That's a big pool. Okay, thank you. I didn't know.
That's a, that's a big pool.
Yeah, you're right. Okay.
Size of a three-car garage.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
My pool's big.
29 by 29.
Yeah, that's a big one.
That's a big one. 30 by 30's pool.
Not Secana River, but it'll do.
Any other questions?
All right, are we voting the motion first, or is it because I made the motion, we're okay with it?
Before I've said since you made the amendment.
All right.
So motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Against?
Ooh, look at you.
Town administrator, well, first of all, town council sitting on the board of licensing. Town administrator, approval for additional interim outdoor seating, Lyrix Bar and Grill, Forest Dr. Road. I know Lyrix is here. Do you want to come up in case we have questions? It's pretty bad when I recognize you in the crowd, huh?
We've been here a little.
I know.
Once or twice.
Well, we've been to Lyrix a lot, one of the things.
You and me have seen them.
Okay, thank you. There was a memo in your packet giving a little bit of the history and the background, and the relevant issue being that the last meeting, you preferred not to include Lyrix in the category of restaurants that had pre-existing seating grandfathered. And so this is before you separately. As was just mentioned, the applicants have been before the council in several public hearings last year. And the council did approve vintiling liquor and entertainment licenses, but the outdoor seating was held up because it was recognized that the town should really get something in an ordinance about outdoor seating. We still don't have the amendments in the ordinance. We do have interim approvals for other restaurants that have outdoor seating. And my recommendation, based on the information we have to date, is to issue the same kind of approval for this establishment. We have made sure in the interim that we have what we need, such as the site plan. I asked the building official to go by. He observed no issues that needed to be addressed. The police department has no concerns whatsoever. The fire department actually did an inspection today, and there are a couple of issues that And there are a couple of issues that need to be addressed, but that the owner and/or the operator have agreed to address, and they typically have thirty days to do that. So from my perspective, there's nothing standing in the way for the town council at this point to approve the out proceeding as well.
And it still stands that alcohol will be served until ten PM?
Yes.
The way you originally put it for the outdoor? That's good with the noise ordinance.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve outdoor seating, the same as we did to everybody else for Lyrix.
Second.
It would cause interim outdoors.
Interim outdoor, right, until November.
Until we get the, it's nothing that. It's just until we get the regular policy. Can I have a second? We're going to work on, we're hoping to get that by the beginning of the fall. We're just doing this so that people who have the perfect weather can still serve outside and we won't disturb businesses. So we have a.
A dual second, yes.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any further questions? Counselor Hilton? I only have a question about this form here, which is a nice form, but it's not filled out. Is the plan going forward?
They're going to fill this out. If you allow us to go forward, I'm going to give them this form, ask them to check off the boxes and to certify that the information provided is accurate.
Okay. Going forward, wouldn't it be better if we had the form filled out before we approved them? I mean, I'm not going to hold you up tonight. This is really a, I mean.
Well, you can argue that both ways. I mean, to some extent, it doesn't make sense that you say something about understanding the approval is conditioned when the approval hasn't been made available. So your approval is conditioned on them agreeing to these terms. They're aware of the terms, so they're ready to sign it. I think it's not a big deal, basically.
Okay. I mean, I'm not going to hold this one up. I'm just saying that if we do more of these, me personally, I would like to see the form filled out, you know, with the check boxes so that I know.
I understand what you're saying, and I think there is the larger issue of, you know, whether the council should see some of the necessary conditions met prior to issuing any sort of approval, rather than doing it under this subject to all legal requirements, which then leaves things open to whatever. So I agree, and I think this form might be a way, a step on the right path in that direction, so.
And again, it doesn't relate to you, but my only other question on this, and I know that they've been in front of us before, and I can't remember. We did see a site plan and all those kinds of things.
Oh, yeah.
But in the past, when we've approved things, you know, we've also gotten the site plan so that as we're looking at this, and you guys already gave us one, just for going for it. Anyways, that was my only thing. It doesn't relate directly to you. All right. So I have a motion and a double second. Any further discussion? Counselor Shabbat?
I just have one question that concerns me, and it concerned me the last time this came up. Normally, when we do anything with a liquor license, I believe we put it out for a public hearing. And I don't remember if that's true or not, so.
We put it out for a public hearing at the beginning. So the first time we came.
Yeah, the first time we came for a liquor license.
We have to pay every time we get told.
Well, wait a minute. I think what Joan is asking, if you're extending the liquor to outside, does that require another public hearing? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
No, there's actually a statute that says if you have seasonal outdoor seating, you don't need to advertise. So normally, any extension, you do need to advertise. Or by statute, a seasonal outdoor extension doesn't require a separate advertising.
And that's at the state level? State statute?
There's a state statute on that, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Welcome.
That was priceless, wasn't it?
Good luck.
Got lucky thirteen on his back, that's why.
Wait until Friday.
She probably can't believe she's walking out of here happy. Okay. All right. McCray's seafood, one fifteen Stafford Row. Mike?
Thank you. This is a slightly more complicated situation. It was posted on the agenda pretty much the same as Lyrix, because at the time, I was fully expecting that we would be able to recommend the same thing. In the meantime, there hasn't really been enough progress on some of the issues that had to be addressed. I will say that we tried many times and early on gave Mike information on what the issues were that needed to be addressed as early as May eighteen, specifically from the building office at the time. And then I believe it was June twenty-second, I didn't get the sense that things were moving forward too fast, and I was worried that we would come back to the council without having made any progress and any new information, no change, whatever, and that doesn't seem to make sense. So I decided it might be a good idea to have a meeting, and we had a meeting, and I explained on the one hand what the issues were that we had concerns with, and on the other hand, wanted to make clear that I knew what Mr. Napolitano thought about the situation, what his perspective was. And I think he had a chance to provide that perspective, which was not altogether positive about how difficult it is to get approved. Regardless, there are several issues that had to be addressed. And the underlying issue, the original issue, is that this is a legally existing non-conforming use. And the initial determination by the zoning or by the building official recognized that, that there was nothing wrong with having this restaurant in this particular location. And so that determination was issued, which then allowed Mr. Napolitano to go forward and try to get the approval for the rest of the business and the outdoor seating and everything else. The outdoor seating is sort of debatable, whether that's an expansion of the pre-existing use, because there was outdoor seating before. It's not the same, but.
It's takeout, correct. It's just simply takeout.
And also, he pointed out to me that there were picnic tables that accommodated quite a few people, and he put smaller, or he was going to put smaller tables there with fewer seats. And then the big question is, what about this tiki bar? And, you know, how many seats does it have? Does that require approval? Where should it be? You know, what are the issues there? I explained that I don't really have the authority to make those decisions. That's up to the building official, to the fire official, maybe the police sometime. And he needed to come to terms with, you know, them, if they in fact had any concerns. That really hasn't been resolved, other than, I should say, the fire department raised some issues. Some of them ultimately we determined really not to be within their jurisdiction under the fire code, such as the safety of seating in a parking lot. Nonetheless, a concern, but they decided that was not really their jurisdiction. They, I think, had a concern with an awning, and the awning was gone the next day. And that's sort of been the story, that, you know, once in a while, things happen. I think the, something was gone the last time the building inspector went by, whether it was one of the tiki bars or one of the Dell.
Well, the tiki bars don't stay there all day long. They're at the beaches.
They're usually at the beach.
Because they have wheels and are mobile. So they go to the beach and they come back at five o'clock or somewhere like that.
Yep, if it's nice. And if it's not, then they obviously put them in the corner there and, yeah, that's what we do.
So that's why I think the building inspector didn't see it, because it wasn't there.
So the first time that I heard that was never clarified or anything. I don't know to what extent that makes a difference from the zoning or the building.
Isn't the tiki bar on the other side of the parking lot away from where the seating is?
No, not.
It was the last time I seen it. It was on the north end of the lot.
Yeah, not any longer. It's on the south, right? Right.
It's on the south.
Down the south, no. But I did talk to Tony about this, and he said because it had wheels and it was mobile, that you couldn't really call it a permanent structure. And it's not there. Most of the time, they're open.
Right. I mean, it would still be, if you were serving from the tiki bar outside, it's located in the R sixty zone, the residential zone, you're not allowed to expand your use without either seeking a use variance. There was a notice of violation that was issued by the zoning official, the interim zoning official on that point. So there's a couple of different ways that the applicant could address that. He could either appeal the notice of violation to the zoning board, basically saying the zoning official got it wrong. He could also ask the zoning board for a variance, but that would be a use variance, which is difficult to get. So it would be upfront about that.
But if he's not serving from the bar and it's just there and he's got the stools there, then is that a problem?
If it was granted.
It would be like a picnic table.
If it was granted on the condition that he wasn't using it to expand his service area, you know, that wouldn't be a problem.
You're not serving.
Like a storage.
Not serving from that.
Okay.
Can I maybe finish?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Don't worry. You're kind of like.
Not quite done yet. So more recently, since there really hadn't been progress in some of these issues, and time did go by, it was decided that a notice of violations would be appropriate. And it was drafted, it was discussed with the solicitor, and it was brought to McCray's seafood and explained what would be happening. And that was unfortunately perhaps right before the July fourth holiday, but that was after more than a month of trying to get these issues resolved. And so there was no ulterior motive for choosing the timing. It was just the result of things not getting resolved at all, basically. What I read in the notice of violation is another new development, which is that a tent has been erected in the parking lot. And again, I don't have the authority to decide what that is or is not. But one of the things I would say, that whatever is decided or however this gets resolved, that we sort of try to nail down what should be there, what should not be there, where it should be. We have a site plan reflecting that. That would take us a long way, you know, to getting this resolved very quickly.
So I think the key of the notice of violation, and granted, maybe the zoning official got something factually wrong. I'm not sure. He did the investigation on it. But the key point would be anything that would expand the service area would be an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Would you like to talk about the pop-up? Or you want me to say something?
Well, the pop-up tent, we took down the awning because I didn't know this. It was legal. So we took it down immediately, probably an hour after the fire marshal left.
Right.
So to mitigate the problem now, now it's ninety-five degrees in that kitchen for all my workers, now we got the sun beaming in on it. So I did one of those pop-up tents from, that you see at the soccer fields that parents use. It takes us two minutes to pop up, and then we take it down at the end of the day. So that's.
So the sun doesn't shine in. It's not expanding any serving area. It's just where people are standing together to take out.
I'm more than happy to get another awning. I can't afford one right now. How big is the tent? It's a ten by ten, and it literally takes two minutes to put up with three.
Nobody's eating under it. Nothing like.
So I think it really comes down to a couple of things, which doesn't need to be resolved by the zoning board, I'm sorry, by the town council tonight. One would be the factual determinations by the zoning official. And he either made a correct factual determination or he didn't, but either way, that can be clarified. And if it was correct, then, you know, there are a couple of different avenues of relief. There are two ways. You can go to the zoning board to seek relief. The third way is it is located to some other zones, the highway commercial zone and the industrial zone. You could ask for a map change from the council. But in any event, that would just require the first step of going back to the zoning official, make sure he got it right.
Now, who would do that?
It would just be a matter of sitting down with the zoning official. The town administrator can be involved.
You guys.
And we could be involved.
Well, the lawyers should be involved, shouldn't they?
Well, and basically, that's what I had asked would happen from the beginning, is that the people who do need to take a look at the situation and ultimately make some sort of a decision or determination coordinate with one another, which is why the building official was supposed to talk with the fire department. They did. I thought they had talked with the solicitor as well, because we should know by now, for example, whether or not having the Dell's trucks there isn't expansion or not. I mean, or requires another approval from the town, and whether the sign for Dell's requires an approval on that. I really don't know.
So I will say, we did review the notice of violation for a legal review, and assuming the facts cited in it, it is legally correct. So, in our opinion, it is legally correct.
Now that we've explained this a little bit more.
It could be that there are other facts. You know, we don't go out and make an investigation of the facts on the ground, so. But in any event, for tonight, I think probably the best tact for the council to take would just be to, you can take that as a condition into any approval that you grant, or.
No, because I think that's when this all tends to fall apart. It's when we say meet all legal requirements, and the people in front of us, if they're brand new, have no idea what legal requirements they need to meet, and nobody follows up on it. And then they just get frustrated and angry over the whole thing. So I think that Mr. Napolitano needs help with this. Because right now, this is cease and desist order, and he doesn't have a license. So what does this mean to Mike?
So.
No, I just want to know, like, is he allowed to operate? What is the next step here?
He can operate, and because he has a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant.
But he doesn't have a license.
And, you know, the reason.
We haven't had a show cause hearing on this.
No, but that's why I'm bringing it up. We haven't even had a show cause.
Exactly. And I think from that point, you can't say that his license to operate should be revoked or could be revoked.
Well, he needs to know.
So I think his license needs to.
But he doesn't have a license. He hasn't issued a license.
Didn't he transfer from the other business?
No, no, you can't transfer. You have to be issued a license. Like, you can transfer, but.
Right.
The last time we said that he had a license meeting all legal requirements. He hasn't met all legal requirements, obviously, because that's why all of this has gone up. So I'm worried, I want to know what his next step is, because he's at a loss too here.
So his next step would be, you know, it would be one of several things. If we take that the building and zoning officials' notice of violation.
Is he here, by the way?
He's not.
No, let me explain it. Because he works for several towns. Actually, he had office hours tonight until like seven thirty, so he couldn't be here.
Because it would be helpful if.
We know exactly.
When it first came to my attention, the tiki bar is in addition. And then when I said to Tony, it has wheels and it's not there most of the time, and he's like, well, I don't know. That's a violation then. And then we talked about the pop-up tent. Like, we need to know if these are true. He needs to know if these are true violations, because we, I mean, let's face it, guys, we gave him a cease and desist. And he's operating, and that's good and fine, but what does he need to clear this up? Because it's not fair to him also.
Right.
I mean, I know that you needed probably Mike to do a little bit more proactively, and that's okay, but at this point, we need to try to solve this.
I'll be, and again, I've been careful not to do things that would suggest that I think I have the authority to make decisions on these issues, because I don't. It's the building official, and I do want to defer to his judgment. But I also think that by now, between the zoning official and, in particular, the solicitor now, because I think anything related to fire and police is resolved. It would be good to sit down together and say, well, can we just decide one way or another whether he needs to go to the zoning board, or the building official can make a decision with the advice of the solicitor, and let's make sure we hit all the issues at once and not take a few weeks to reach issue.
But in the meantime, he's losing revenue in the meantime.
He's running. He's running, and that's what I just said. Meanwhile, he can run until we actually give him.
Unless you take any action to, and even with the cease and desist that got issued, the notice of violation, you know, there hasn't been any actions taken to enforce that.
But you weren't under that understanding, right? You thought you could not open July fifth. Is that the impression you got?
He came and he said we have to shut down after July fifth. And, but one thing about this too is like, that's the first I heard of anything. I had a fire, the fire marshal came down. I thought we were good with that. I didn't hear anything else. And then I came to the town clerk's office. I'm legal with everything else. I got everything else. The only thing that's holding it up is the building inspector saying, you're good to go. So I just want to make that clear. I'm not trying to skip any steps. I might be a little ignorant to the process, because to be honest with you, every town's a little bit different. But, and he came down, I don't know if it's the tiki bar, the pop-up tent, I don't know what got it going, but he even told me, he said, since that's a mobile structure, I don't think I could do anything about that.
And I wanted to mention that, that he was not sure how far his jurisdiction went, and so he needed to get guidance from that. Now frankly, I think he could have gotten that if he took steps to get it. That's, you know, it's easy for me to criticize that, but it could have been done, it should have been done. I do think, what I said earlier, that the situation on the ground tends to change from day to day, and that doesn't necessarily help. But it confuses the hell out of the building official, to be honest with you. And it might be nice to just decide once and for all, unless that's not possible. If it's important for you to be able to move the seats around the parking lot any given day, then, you know, say so. We'll add that to the list of how we can resolve that.
The only reason that I moved it to the north part.
The tiki bar.
Is because, because you know what? There's a lot of traffic that goes by there, and we're not open all the time. And I just thought it would be easier for, that lot does not get used. So the beach wasn't.
Run out, though.
Yeah. I just figured, try a new spot. But if you want me to keep it in that back area, I don't know. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to run a business here. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to run a business here. And I understand where you're coming from, but coming from me too, it's like, it's tough. It's like, every town is different. And then I thought I was good to go. And I'm not saying that, just to...
I know that, but I frankly, at our meeting, I was clear that you were not good to go, that there were some things we had to find a way to resolve. And I think that's on both, both ends of the coin here. We should both be moving more quickly, I think, on resolving this. I will say, you know, in fairness to the building official, but also sometimes to the council, you're between a rock and a hard place. You know, people complain about this going on, this being run as a business, and, you know, what is the tiki bar doing on the property line? We get those complaints on the one hand. On the other hand, we get complaints that we're not friendly enough to businesses. So we're trying to find a way, you know, between those two avocacies, and that's not always easy either, so.
Madam President? Mr. Administrator, you mentioned that there are complaints coming. Do we have any number, any, I mean, who's making these complaints? This is literally the first I have heard of any of this.
I don't think you would be surprised in Tiverton to learn of complaints being made about this. Okay, so...
I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, all...
He's only been here two months.
And, and, you know, and I'll just, I'll just say from my perspective, number one, I mean, I don't think that Mike is here in front of us because he's trying to pull a fast one. I mean, we all know that Mike's mother was the mayor of Newport, so he understands, you know, that there are processes around here. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. And then number two, I mean, I spent a significant amount of time working in restaurants myself, you know, this time of year. Dealing with this stuff is one of the last things that you're thinking about. So, yeah, I, I think that we need, we do need to find a resolution, and as long as we get some of the health issues and that sort of thing squared away, whatever those are, but if it's, if it's nitpicky stuff about a sign, I mean, what are we, what are we doing here? Let's get the guy open, and let's address it in November.
May I just quickly address that? I think what was said earlier is the only solution, because I don't think this is nitpicky little stuff. It's stuff that is in the ordinance. And the question is whether you want us to enforce the ordinance, or you want to change the ordinance.
And I...
And that we are clear with people what the requirements are upfront, and ask them to meet them ahead of time, instead of pointing fingers at each other after the fact, which is what we're doing right now.
All right, so this is what I'm going to suggest, and see if the council agrees with me. Apparently, according to the solicitor, Mike can still operate, but then the next two weeks before our next council meeting, Mike, the town administrator, the zoning official, and maybe with, with the lawyer, getting a greater understanding of what actually is down there and can give an opinion. I will continue this until the next meeting, and then, Mike, you can please try to work with them. And in two weeks from now, we'll see what the resolution is. Does that sound, and meanwhile, Mike can operate?
Well, he can stay open.
Yes, the solicitor just said he could.
And then, Madam President, just to, just to clarify, I think the, the proper motion would be to grant the temporary approval for the outdoor seating tonight. And you can do that on a, on a, on a time-limited basis, as you've done with other applications before. That way, there's, there's no confusion that you can continue to operate during the interim.
Yeah, but my, my only question is, I thought if this was just basically picnic tables for takeout, that this really is an outdoor seating, because there's no liquor being out there, there's no servers being out there. This is just a takeout area, which other places have, that we're not calling outdoor seating, because they're not serving, a waitress isn't coming to it. That's what I understood.
I, I still think it would probably be appropriate, based on the fact that it has been submitted for that application, so we don't, you want to make sure that there's some action taken on that.
I'll make that motion.
So, grant temporary outdoor seating, and this, the issue we got is license, though we have to do that, will be continued until the next meeting. And meanwhile, all the people that need to meet together, and everybody needs to communicate and see if we can have a solution in two weeks.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep.
And I think ultimately, what it comes down to is that, that he needs to satisfy the zoning and building official.
Right, but also, it's come up tonight in discussion, that maybe some of his decisions weren't correctly, maybe he wasn't completely informed.
We'll talk to him.
So maybe we need to look into what Mike actually has there, and whether the building official was aware of that.
We'll talk to him and make sure that everybody ends up on the same page, hopefully.
So I have a motion, John?
A second.
And I have a second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
So I just, Mike, are you, are you serving liquor outside?
No.
He's not serving liquor at all.
Do you, do you serve any food outside?
Just from what they get at the window.
Just at the window, okay.
Yes. But there's no liquor being served at McCray's at all. You don't have a liquor license.
Doesn't have a liquor license yet, right, right.
I'm joking.
One thing at a time.
Let's not film that right now.
One thing at a time.
Let's just get you open. Council Hilton, did you have something to say?
I, I have something to say from a global point of view, and it's similar to what I said the last time, which is that I, I just do not think it is in anybody's best interest, including the business owner, to grant licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements, because this is like Groundhog Day. I mean, tonight, it's Mr. Napolitano who's here. We've had, this happens over and over again. And, you know, in a great many communities, you don't get to go in front of the council or the, the body that grants the license until you have everything. And, and that way, everybody works hard to get all of that done ahead of time, and then once you have your license, you know that you're good to go, because this is, this is difficult for the applicant. In some cases, it's simply because it's complicated. In some cases, I'll be honest, there have been some applicants who've taken advantage of the town. They're like, well, I've got my approval, and now I'll let, you know, them chase me until, you know, I follow through anything. I'm not saying you're one of those folks. But in, in some cases, you know, it's just that, for whatever reason, it doesn't happen. And then, look at the amount of time and effort and energy it costs the town. Not just you, but, you know, we are using solicitor resources, and the building officials all tied up in this, and the fire marshal's making multiple trips, and the town administrator has to get involved. And it's all because, instead of following one process and the same process, and making sure everybody's got all their ducks in a row before we grant a license, we do this well, sort of subject to all meeting legal requirements, and, and, you know, it, and then we're accused of being business unfriendly. And in an effort to be overly friendly, we make it way more complicated for everybody. So I really hope that we can streamline this process and not keep doing this.
Well, I actually talked to the town administrator about this yesterday, I think, on Sunday. I think we're going to give the EDC a project, and have a welcome package when businesses go in and apply for license. And with this, and with this welcome package, but this is what you need in order to get your license. And also put like some of this, like sign ordinance, which is very important, because some people replace their sign, and they don't realize that there is a sign ordinance, and they have to be careful about that. So I know the EDC has been willing to work on projects and looking for something that would be beneficial, and I think this would be a perfect project. And I talked to Jan, and I think Jan's going to talk to the EDC about it.
I'll talk to Jan tomorrow.
Okay. And I just think, welcome to Tiverton with, and so then when they come to us, they got this package, and they have their checklist all done. Does that sound...
It sounds good. I just have one thing to say when, when you're done.
Okay. And I'm done.
Okay. Well, Ms. Hilton said that, Councilor Hilton said that we have the plan to, everything she said was correct, but the only problem is, we don't have a set of plans for this particular issue right now. And that's what we're working on. So you, we can't give these new businesses, say, outdoor seating, here, do this. We don't have it yet, but as of November, we will, so...
Before November, we're hoping to get this done by the fall.
Right, so, yeah, right, we'll get this thing done, but right now, they don't have something to follow. And then we're in the process of giving everybody something, because I'm the guy that wants it there for absolutely everybody. You can do it, then she can do it, and even him, he can do it. And that's what we have to have, but we don't have them rules on art in effect yet, and that's what we need to fix.
Don't you think it'd be helpful, Randy, just to get your license if you have this checklist?
Absolutely, it's, it's...
And you can get it.
It's very easy to do. Once you have, once you know what you have to do, and they give you a piece, and then if you don't do it, then too bad for you, you should have did what you were supposed to do. But right now, they don't know exactly what they're supposed to do, because we don't know what they're supposed to do, we don't have it in writing yet. It's all over the place.
One of the things that gets me is, that's okay if it's a new business that's opening for the first time. This is more or less a transfer from somebody selling a restaurant that was already there, that was doing the business. He just bought that business and took it over. So to me, he's just transferring the ownership. He's still running the same business that was there before, just a different name, different owner.
As long as he doesn't change the physical layout or extend the building.
I understand, but, you know, when you set up the rules and regulations for a new business, that's something different. That's somebody that's going into a business that's never done it before, so they need to know all of these things that have to be done. He's just buying a business that was already there.
But he still has to go through that checklist.
I understand that, but it should be a little easier for him than it would be for somebody opening a new business for the first time.
Madam President, one more question for the administrator. Does e-permitting also cover licenses?
It is going to, if we have our druthers. It will be the next step after the building office and the, what was the other one? The assessor? I forget.
How quickly are we?
We hope to move into that as soon as we actually have the equipment here, and we have started with the building permits. And we move on, because the clerk's office is already in line to do that. The one other thing, and one that's actually immediately relevant to that, is that even if we have a checklist, even if we have e-permitting, I think we as staff in Town Hall have some obligation as well, and we need to train ourselves to say, you know, are we clear with people what they need? And if they need help, do they feel that they could come to us? And we'll spend a few minutes with them explaining, you know, how to get certain pieces of information in a way, because I, I think that's part of the equation, instead of just like, here's the checklist, go figure it out, come back when you're done, and then we have criticism of it.
Yeah, I have a motion. Did I get a second on that motion?
Yes, John did.
May I ask one more question about this? I have heard that we're thinking about having this ordinance ready for the fall. That's, I mean, it's only the middle of July, and there are other businesses out there that would like to be able to expand to outdoor seating. We have no ordinance to offer them.
But they haven't come to...
They have to come before us.
Well, they have, they have to come before us, but some of them aren't coming because they know that there's no ordinance. I mean, so, is, can this process happen more quickly, so that...
I made a motion that we would grant them a temporary one until November, but they got to come before us.
And if I may...
Which is what...
Right.
I think at the time, the thinking was, let's not rush finishing the ordinance, let's instead make sure that we do it right. I actually think that what we currently have with the revised proposed amendments got to be pretty close. So I think we could actually, you know, schedule it for either the next or the first meeting in August and get going, because it may well take, you know, at least a full public hearing, if not more, because different people will experience it differently. So I think we're, we're close to being able to put it on the agenda.
I'm just saying, I hope that it's soon, because some of these businesses will need a certain amount of time, and if we don't pass this ordinance and end up giving it to them till the end of September or October, then they won't have much time before their relicensing is up in November, so sooner rather than later.
But can't they come and get a temporary one? Like, we just gave Larry's one, and they never had it before.
Yeah. They just have a little one.
That's not what the issue, though, is. I think the issue is that, is we can issue these temporary ones, but then everybody gets relicensed in November, and in theory...
Everybody does anyway.
Right, but they're going to have to be compliant with the new ordinance in November. So we need to get them that new ordinance, so they have plenty of time to be able to do that.
What, what, what are they complying with now in order to get this temporary?
It's that checklist.
I understand the checklist, but I mean, we're talking about state law, right? That's what we're making sure that they comply with? Define the premise, you know, do all these things that are codified in state law? Why can't we just get what the state requirements are? Put them on a checklist?
But it's, but it's on zoning also, right? It has to do with many things, not just...
Right, well, you know, I think there was a couple of things, at least, this is what I understood, was that the ordinance was just intended to codify what the requirements were in the review process, so that whoever was coming in, they wouldn't, they would know what they had to do, and it wouldn't leave the town up to applicants thinking that, well, different procedures were used for different people. It would spell out, here's the way we're going to apply what the state law requires. Here's the checklist we have.
And I'll, and I'll save Mike, that's just something to think about, but I will save my comments about the ordinance for when that comes up.
All right, I'm going to move on unless Mike has anything to say.
Well, I just want to say, like, I don't think it's an expansion of business. I had three crappy, to be honest with you, picnic tables that were falling apart, so if I put that out there, and then they, they end up collapsing on someone, then that's a problem. And what I'm doing is, I have, now I have four teak tables, I have that tiki bar on the side, I feel like I lost seating. And I'm not, I'm not asking for more seating, I'm just saying, I'm trying to warm the place up. I don't think it's an expansion of business. It's, it's a matter of opinion, but I just...
All right, well, all right, so we'll see you in two weeks. That's what the, that's what the motion is. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against?
No, no, I...
No, we all voted so.
Oh, you all voted. I didn't see you vote, that's why I thought...
No, just the handout real quick.
All right, Mike?
Okay, Mike, good luck, Mike, good luck.
Appointments and resignations, Open Space Commission resignation of Ginger Lacy. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept her resignation with regret and thank her for her service.
So moved.
Madam President? Do I have a motion?
I, I was going to make a motion to accept with regret Ginger Lacy's appointment to the Open Space Commission and thank her for her service. She's been a tremendous, tremendous volunteer in the Open Space Commission and all of Tiverton will miss her greatly.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Resignation, Open Space Commission of John P. Skyler.
Skyler.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept his resignation with regret and thank him for his service.
I'll defer to you.
No, I just, well, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Planning Board resignation of Carol Gaiman. Carol's been doing this for a very, very long time. I'd like to, and the planning board is not an easy board to be on, so I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Carol's Gaiman's resignation with regret and thank her for her many years of service.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Harbor and Coastal Water Management resignation of Melinda Foley Marcello. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Melinda's resignation with regret and thank[1645.86] I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Melinda's resignation with regret and thank her for her service.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Conservation, Appointments Conservation Commission, three-year term expiring 4/15/2021. Three available positions are available. Two of the ones in front of you right now is reappointment, so I don't, I think we can appoint them tonight, right, Peter? Because there's more positions and you have reappointments. The first is Tom Malinsky, 122 Thomas Street, reappointment request.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tom Malinsky to the Tiberton Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring 4/15/2021.
Second.
Motion's remain second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Richard Gaiman, 37 Neck Road, reappointment request for the Conservation Commission.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Richard Gaiman to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring 4/15/2021.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Harbor and Coastal Water Management, is Mr. Gaiman happy with this? Look at him. Harbor and Coastal Water Management, two-year term expiring 7/15/2020. Four positions available. Gregory Banner, 59 Wannasimat Drive, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Gregory Banner to the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission for a two-year term expiring 7/15/2020.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Paul Duatt, 17 South Avenue, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Paul A. Duatt to the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission for a two-year term expiring 7/15/2020.
Second.
Motion remain in second. All those in favor? Bruce Cox, 35 Sunset View Drive, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Bruce H. Cox to the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission for a two-year term expiring 7/15/2020.
Second.
Motion remain in second. All those in favor? The Cassid Hill Cemetery Committee. No, keep going. The Cassid Hill Cemetery Commission, three-year term expiring, it doesn't say, is that 4/15/2000?
Probably 7/15.
Seven, yeah, you're right. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking up here. Well, if you look up at the conservation...
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking at that. That could be the, two positions available. Alfred Almeida, 434 Bogomash Road, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Alfred Almeida Jr. to the Cassid Hill Cemetery Commission for a three-year term expiring 7/15/2021.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Zoning Board of Review, five-year term expiring 7/15/2023. One full and two alternate available. Wendy Taylor Humphrey, 3198 Main Road, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Wendy Taylor Humphrey to a five-year term at the zoning board expiring 7/15/2023.
Second, discussion?
Yeah.
Is this for the full position or for one of the alternates?
Wendy was a full position.
Full position, yeah.
Yeah.
It's full position.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Landfill Recycling, three-year term expiring 7/15/2021. Three positions available. Richard Gaiman is a gotten for punishment. He's up again. 37 Neck Road, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'm actually, just having been the Chair of Conservation, I believe that this appointment is, it's a part of the Conservation Commission. In other words, the Conservation Commission has a seat on the landfill committee, which Richie has filled. So I'm not sure whether or not we actually have to appoint him or the Conservation Commission just makes him keep going.
Well, if he is serving in that capacity, it's, well, it says there's three positions, so it depends on which one he's going to fill. If you want to appoint him to fill one of the council positions, you could do that.
Yes, Richard?
Well, I have been sitting on this since I joined Conservation for a long, long time. If you want to give it to somebody else, you might get it.
Oh, no, 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 that's not where we want it.
We just don't know if we should have... He's willing to give it up at any point, though.
Considering there are three positions available, if you were to appoint him tonight, that would allow the Conservation Commission that if they wanted to send someone else, they could, so...
If they could find anyone? Okay, I'm just going to make a motion, how's that?
Okay.
I make a motion to reappoint Richard Gaiman to the Landfill Recycling Committee for a three-year term expiring 7/15/2021.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, three-year term expiring 4/15/2021. Three available positions. Martin Van Hoff, 170 Bogomash Road, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Martin Van Hoff to the Open Space and Land Preservation Commission for a three-year term expiring 4/15/2021.
Second.
Motion's remain second. All those in favor? Planning Board, three-year term expiring 7/15/2021. Two available positions. Rosemary Eva, 4019 Main Road, reappointment request.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint Rosemary Eva to the Planning Board for a three-year term expiring 7/15/2021.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Against? Uh, six word. Can we go to that? Seven and five, seven and five Department of True Approval and Transfer, $14,846.64. I love the cents when I say these. From FY 2017-18 budget to cover overtime cost. Two six thirty, 2018, from account 3310. Fifty-one oh one Personnel Service to account 3310. Fifty-one oh four Overtime for $14,846.64. I'm just going to excuse myself for a minute. Go on.
This was, this is from last year's budget. We were trying to hold, there are several aspects of the contract that don't come into play. We don't know what the exact number is until the very last day of the contract, which is June 30th. There is an audit, there is a comp leave buyback. So instead of trying to just take a large chunk of money and moving it over, we had asked, we spoke with the Administrator and the Town Treasurer and asked that if we waited until we got into this year and finished those numbers up and came in with the exact numbers that we needed to balance off the year on the overtime account, and that's what these numbers are for. I can give you a better breakdown if you need it, but I think it's in the backup.
Thank you, Chief. Absent Council President DiMedius, I guess I'm in charge here. Any discussion or questions from the council? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made to approve a transfer of $14,846.64 from account 3310 fifty-one oh one Personnel Services to account 3310 fifty-one oh four. Overtime, motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, new business. Town Administrator, approval slash ratification of contract for part-time zoning officer Matthew T. Allen, one-year contract, impact statement included. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. I am very happy to announce that we did get a very good candidate. There was only one candidate, but fortunately, it was a very good one. We coordinated the interview with the Personnel Board and had a Skype interview at first, and we were all very, very impressed. We were able to follow up with the interview in my office with Matt and again impressed both with his background and with his personality and attitude towards the job at hand. And unanimously felt that he's the right person for the job. He can add a lot, not only in terms of actually bringing more focus to the zoning enforcement part of the job, but also to the team of what may ultimately become a land use office that combines the building office and planning because he does have the planning background as well. He has a lot of experience with environmental planning and project management, things like that, so I think he can be a great team addition. And I strongly recommend that you ratified a contract with him.
I'm sorry I wasn't here, but is Matthew here tonight?
Excuse me?
Is, it is. Is he here tonight?
Is Matthew here?
No, he's not. He was not able to be.
I just want to make sure I had his name right, the way you said it. Excuse me. All right, okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve slash ratify the contract for part-time zoning officer Matthew T. Allen.
Second.
Motion remain second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Town Administrator, approval to extend contract with Par Engineering for landfill closure consulting services until September 30th, 2018. John?
Thank you. I think by now, we had all expected to go out with a new request for bids for consulting engineering services relating to the landfill because this contract has been in place for a while and it's been through several extensions. So somewhat reluctantly, then I want to recommend yet another extension, but essentially, it is the same work that they have been doing that needs to continue before the actual implementation of the closure plan can start. And that includes doing environmental monitoring, in particular, over the next two months. And in the same time, finalize the construction documents and the request for bids for the next stage. So it seems to make the most sense to me from an efficiency and cost effectiveness perspective that we continue with Par until at least September 30th, and hopefully we'll be in a better position to move into the next phase with the landfill closure.
Madam President?
Counsel Abbott?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of the contract with Par Engineering for landfill closure consulting services until September 30th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion?
Motion remain second. Discussion?
Thank you. I just, I want to point out that I think it is, as the Administrator stated, long overdue for us to go out to bid for these services. You know, I myself have had some concerns about the way that the project has come thus far. In some instances, it almost feels like Par was successful in engineering themselves, additional work down the line with some of the designs and then reworking the design, so on and so forth. So I'm excited to see this actually go out to bid, and I'd be anxious to see what other companies think of the closure plan because I know that there was some discrepancy between what our former DPW Director, who would actually close landfills, thought should be done versus what Par had put into place.
Quick question, does it have to be on the agenda to go out for bid next time?
If, yeah, it would.
Because it has to be voted to go out for bid.
Yeah, you'd have to put it on, you'd have to get the vote to bid.
With the next, the full bid?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. No, 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 I just wanted to make it clear that this doesn't mean you can go out for bid now.
It's not quite ready to go, but it's almost there, yeah.
Okay. So motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Town Administrator, approval for DPW to purchase two Ford 650 plow trucks included in the FY '19 budget for the first of five annual payments of $49,000 through a master price agreement.
So let me start and then Kim can finish with the explanation. This was, in fact, anticipated when the budget was developed, and it was approved for a five-year payment plan essentially of $49,000 per year to be able to acquire two trucks. But we now are actually in the new fiscal year, so we actually have to approve the purchase. And then there has been a little complication where Kim found out that we might almost be buying the wrong trucks, and we needed one bigger one, and it's going to cost a little bit more, but Kim can explain that better than I can.
Yeah, originally, we were supposed to get two Ford 650s, and the whole reason we were going with these trucks was because we wanted trucks with posi traction for doing the hills in the north end. You can't get it on a 650. Okay, and the other thing was, one of the bids that was put in was for F-550, which was $118,000. 550s were too small. We already have one. So what we did is, I figured, split the difference, go with one bigger truck, which would be a 750, which would have the air brakes and have the capability for a lockup rear end with the plow package, the sander and all, and go with the smaller truck also to keep it within our budget, which would be both diesel diesels, which would have the sanding package and plowing package, which would help, it'd be four-wheel drive.
And the smaller trucks could get the smaller areas where the bigger plows could jump.
Yeah, yeah. So we have a four-wheel drive 550 smaller truck with the complete plow and sanding package, and the F-750, which is a diesel also, with the complete sanding and plowing package for the same, within the reason of the same budget.
And we budgeted $49,000 in the new.
That's correct.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President? What would be the difference in price to stay with a 650? Do you know? Is it affordable? So we could have the lockup posi in case we need another extra one because we know our fleet's not very good?
Well, it has to be a 750. The 650s won't do it. They don't lock up. You can't get a lockup rear end in a 650.
But the 550 will?
The 550 doesn't matter because we have four-wheel.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's a four-wheel drive. So I had to split the difference between a smaller truck and a bigger truck to do what I wanted.
Okay.
Okay, really wanted two 750s, but it just wouldn't work in the budget.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Madam President? I'd like to make a motion to approve DPW for the purchase of one Ford 550 and one Ford 750 plow trucks included in the fiscal year '19 budget with the first of five annual payments being $49,000 through the master price agreement. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Only nine more trucks to go.
Sooner than you think.
Twin Rivers Tibetan LLC requests approval of host community agreement casino gaming operations. Welcome. Do you want to speak or...
Sure.
Okay.
First of all, I saw on the agenda Carol Gaiman was resigning. She spent a lot of time on the planning board on our project, so we appreciate her time as well. This is the host community agreement for operations, and some of us who spent time on the subcommittee recall that it was almost a year ago that the agreement for development was approved, and then at the end of the year, 2017, this was passed up, but we put it on hold collectively because we had to address some of the operational protocols and the liquor license. So with that addressed, we worked with the Solicitor's Office to address those two paragraphs and wanted to put it back in front of you for consideration because the time is coming close for operations now. I think the one outstanding issue is the public safety protocol that's attached to this was kind of a working outline that we were going to meet with fire and police, especially post-operations, as paragraph two says, because it's really going to be a living, breathing document. We've continued to work on that, and that's part of what we're talking about in executive session tonight.
Right.
So that's that piece. Obviously, it's the council's choice. I mean, it may make sense to consider this subject to finalizing the public safety protocol, which we hope to make some progress on that tonight, but...
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, but I also wanted to be made clear that there's reasons why we're going into executive session for that security plan because there's some security aspects that really the public does, should not know, and it's part of keeping the casinos safe. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that is why we're going into executive. It's not any secrets that we have. It's just that this is the way that we have to do it in order to keep the casinos safe.
Right.
Any questions? I do think that if we do approve this, I think it's contingent on habit. That's my suggestion. You'll have a security claim.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have questions. I was just going to make a motion. We can do, okay, so it would be a motion to approve the host community agreement for operations, subject to approval of the safety protocol.
Second.
Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Thank you, Mike. We'll see you in there soon. I thought we're doing well tonight.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah, don't jinx us. Town Solicitor requests from Counsel LeBeau to waive attorney-client privilege.
So, Madam President, this involved the Access to Public Records Act litigation that the Attorney General brought. A request was made for documents pertaining to that. We've gathered all the relevant documents. There's only a couple that would fit into the category, although they all...
Of attorney-client privilege?
They all, well, that would fit into being responsive in any way, although they're all communications either between the Solicitor's Office and Mr. LeBeau and Randy, or there was one communication that was from Tony to the entire council. Randy's attorney asked that it be placed on the council agenda for waiver so we could release those specific documents to the Attorney General's office. We've reviewed it. As long as the waiver is specific to those documents that are responsive and not a general waiver, we wouldn't have any issue.
So this would be just for this case and just those two documents?
Yes.
Well, just the documents that have conversation between you and Mr. LeBeau and then the one between Tony and the council?
Right, and so the ones that are between Randy and the Solicitor's Office, he's already waived on that, so they'll go over, and this would just be to waive on that one communication that's an email from Tony to the council.
And you advise that we should do this?
There's no issue with that. There's nothing to...
Madam President? Mr. Solicitor, if we don't waive our right to this, is that a, you know, poke in the eye to the Attorney General? Because quite frankly, you know, I think that in naming the entire counsel in this lawsuit is ridiculous.
Which, which we're working on?
And I'm infuriated by it. And I actually went so far as to go all the way up to the Attorney General's office as one of the people who was, you know, named as member of this council in this and ask as member of this council on this and asked for the actual complaint that brought us into it, and they refused to give it to me. So, you know, I, I'm not really inclined to share anything with the Attorney General that, you know, he, we don't actually have to or has been subpoenaed.
Yep, so if you don't take the vote, basically that one email that is to the host council wouldn't be sent. There's no way that they would get it at that point. I'm not sure how they would react, but, you know, our perspective is, there's really no reason not to.
John, give it to him, will you? Let's put this thing to bed.
Wait a minute. All right, wait, but that's, that's, but we don't know what that email contains. It's, it's not part of this package. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know what that, what information that email.
I mean, I know exactly which one he's talking about, and it's really nothing, but.
Does anybody know what it is? No.
I can pull it up if you want. I mean.
No. I hesitate to know the details because technically I shouldn't be discussing it, but.
If the Solicitor says there's no problem, we're giving it, then let's just give it.
Can I ask a question? Are we, we're waiving attorney-client privilege to give this email to Mr. LeBeau's attorney or to the Attorney General?
The Attorney General.
To the Attorney General.
Which Mr. LeBeau's attorney?
He would have it as well.
Which he will get to.
And, and is there precedent for this, or does this open up a Pandora's Box where once you've gone down this road in future litigation, you're, this can be considered a precedent?
If it's specific to this one email, then no, because, you know, every litigation's different, every communication is different. Just by waiving on one, you're not going to waive on the other, and, you know, our thinking was, this one particular email, there's nothing really substantive in it, and if it helps this thing get put to bed, then that's probably the right way to go.
Our motion should be specific to this one email.
Yes, and, and it was, for, for your record, it was sent on March 28th of 2018.
March 28th, 2018. Okay, any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
If the attorneys would like us to do this and, you know, waive our, waive it for one email, I have absolutely no problem doing that, and I would like to move it along if we can, and especially if it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's just what he's recommending, or he's asking. I'm okay to do it.
I'd like to understand a motion.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to waive the attorney-client privilege for the email subject to that's only being the email that was distributed on March 28th, 2018, as referenced by the town solicitor.
To the council.
To the council.
Second.
But not me, because I didn't get it.
Oh, you got it as well.
I did?
Yeah.
Well, I don't open my emails, so.
Well, you can't get it if you don't open it, Randy. I mean, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, there's no bid to request for proposals. Town Administrator, no.
Thank you. I have two announcements relating to the Fire Department, and one is a positive one and the other one is not so positive. They both relate to the rescue service, and last month, I got a letter from the chief explaining how the department has been able to not only meet the goal of collecting $650,000 in receipts, but expects to exceed that goal, and he felt strongly that his staff deserves commitment for, commending for their effort and doing a great job with that service. So I, I wanted to pass that on, and I do believe that you don't achieve that without providing good services and timely services and things like that, and also that it's important to let the staff know from the firefighters and the EMTs to the administrative support staff that they're doing a good job developing this part of the service, which is both the service and also brings revenue to the town. So that's the first part. Related to the same issue is that we currently have one vehicle in operation for the rescue service instead of three, and I just wanted to mention that as well, not to necessarily rain on the parade, but it's, it's an issue that is serious that the condition of our vehicles is not great, and we're currently running the worst of the three that we have. Both of the other ones need repairs, and then related to that is that we're currently short on mechanic help, and so we have to send out those vehicles for service by others. So that is altogether a more concerning situation that I think I should mention as well.
It's one or two that's in service. I thought I just heard him correct.
One may have come back, but one, one had to go through.
It's two now?
Yeah.
Well, I thought I heard you say two from the audience.
I did. We had on July 3rd, rescue one in the south end broke down. We went to put rescue three in, which is a reserve rescue that's 13 years old, that was transporting a cancer patient, and that truck caught fire. So I've taken the reserve truck out of service. Scott Murray from Tibbeton Auto Body put in a lot of extra time, and he got the truck back for us on July 4th, so we did get it back. So we're back to two, but we have nothing to fall back into.
All right, just to make it clear, the, the vehicle that, that caught fire, nobody was injured?
No, no one was injured.
Because it does sound kind of dramatic, and I just want to make sure.
Oh, it did.
Everyone realizes that nobody, nobody was injured.
No, no one was injured.
That, that's important to me. Thank you.
Chief, and more importantly than that, the rescue billing did go out on that run, even though the truck got fired, right?
Negative, we gave it to mutual aid.
We gave him a discount.
Do we have fire insurance on that vehicle? No, you do not.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The other announcement or comment is on our Department of Public Works, which has gone, been going through quite a stressful period with the director position being vacant, the administrative position being vacant, and we all know how crucial that position is, and I just wanted to commend again the entire staff there for hanging in there and getting as much work done as they possibly can. And actually, to start with Kim in that regard, because he's doing yeoman's work, and it's not an easy job, but also everybody else for jumping in, and the people who have helped with the administrative position, and other people who are flexible in terms of giving someone up from their office to help out in DPW, and I think it's fair to single out Sue Richards for, for doing what she was doing there and, and really holding the place together and doing work well beyond what she has in her job description, so.
Thank you. Town council announcements?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Information for the public, the beaches, Fogland Beach, we've gotten numerous calls when it's closed, and I just want to pass it on to the people. The reason it's closed is there's no lifeguard, so we cannot open the beach when there's no lifeguard. Therefore, the facilities are not open because there's no one there to watch them, so people have been calling complaining about it. I think it would be a good idea if we looked into putting a portage on down there. Portage on's around $90 for the month. It's costing us around $65 a day to put a gate attendant there just to open the bathrooms. So I think it would be feasible to look into putting a portage on down there for the summer.
And, and as I understand, the recreation director did talk to the town administrator.
Oh, he did, okay.
And.
And I support that.
Yeah, and he's working on that, and that's nothing that we have to approve because it's only $90.
Correct. But I just want to let the public know that that's the reason why the beaches are not open. There's no lifeguard.
Now, if there's a lifeguard there, then there's an attendant, and then it's open.
Then, then, yeah. Then everything's open, yes, yeah.
See what the law.
All right. All right, I just want to remind the council that we have a meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the senior center. This hopefully will be the final charter revision meeting where we will decide what goes on ballot. I want to remind everyone that I may not be there because I'm technically on vacation this week, and I do have plans tomorrow, but I'm going to try to get back in town. But John is prepared, and if it has, if he has to do it, he will. But I will make every effort to come, to be back. Anybody else?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate the kudos to the Fire Department and specifically to Chief Lloyd and his staff, because I know when I first got on board in this council, that was one of the first things that Chief Lloyd mentioned to me, that, you know, we were deficient in meeting our rescue billing numbers, and, you know, north of $650,000 is a significant jump.